At that town meeting, it was voted to approve a district in town that will allow this downtown area to have a higher density of housing and a mixed use of housing for townhomes and single-family homes, provided that we give back at least 40% open space. And the developer, Mr. Lobeser, has agreed to do a significant amount of payback to the town in the form of a variety of different things that we can touch on when we get going through the process. But that was approved, and that allowed us to start the design of this residential development. So if you want to kind of click ahead. So as we say, this project will be a mix of small lot upscale, single-family homes in the traditional New England-style village setting. It's in close proximity to downtown. And what we were trying to do is provide a pedestrian-friendly environment and that the area establishments would benefit from an increased patronage that these new residences would provide. This is sort of the cover sheet for the entire subdivision, where we just want to kind of highlight where we are in proximity to Route 495, Route 140, Route 126, the downtown area behind Town Hall, and kind of show you where we are and why we thought this was a great spot to put this overlay district. And Jim, if you want to zoom into that development summary, oh, I'm sorry, on that same sheet, I don't know if you can zoom into the development summary?
I'm not sure if I can, actually.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, no. It basically just says, you know, it's a mix of townhomes, triplex townhomes, and single-family homes. And based on the criteria that was set forth in the overlay district with distances between buildings, distances from property lines, we've met that in a way in which 168 units of homes will be developed. If you can kind of click forward. So the setting was, the original site was a 130-acre Varney sand and gravel operation in years past. It's accessed from Mill Street and also off of Route 140. Eighty, roughly 80 acres of the 130 will be for this development of single-family residential housing. The other 50 acres was for Lincoln Properties. It was recently approved by your board and the Conservation Board to do sort of the transportation terminal that they have off of Route 140. So as the plans progress, you'll see that, you know, we integrated one of the intersections to be servicing both this residence and the industrial use. And this was the slide that we presented at town meeting, just basically showing the parcel, the 80-acre parcel roughly, that we got the overlay district approved to be on. You'll notice that in the white areas, that's sort of the areas that were previously gravelled and mined by the Varneys. So what we tried to do, and you'll see in the upcoming slides, is focus our development on the areas that were previously disturbed by the gravel This is a slide that incorporates our development in its full build-out. This build-out shows the connection behind Town Hall. That's a bit different from what the town started town meeting, just a slight change as to accessing the property at the signalized intersection out in front of the Old Domino's Pizza in Town Hall. That was brought up in between the town meeting and the submission of the definitive subdivision. Kevin Lobeser agreed to do that. It is an additional cost, but what it will do is also, that connection to that intersection will allow the town's DPW to add stormwater to our infrastructure in this location. And basically, this overall slide shows the townhomes that will be on the main road, but that will collect traffic from Mill Street and bring it all the way out to Route 140. And Jim, I don't know if you're allowed or can give me cursor capabilities? I don't know if that's going to help or hinder.
Yeah, no, we can't. I got the Zoom going here, but no, for security purposes, we can't share with others. Sorry.
I understand. Most priorities are key.
That's right.
I understand.
One point of clarification. Does that picture match the plans from, I guess, the dated March 6th?
They're probably slightly different, just slightly. Again, this was provided to the town at the lieutenant governor's presentation for the grant money for Route 140. It was probably a little bit before the application for your board, so there might be some small changes, yes.
Okay, because I'm seeing the orange indicates houses. And on the plans I got from the 6th, I don't see houses on the bottom of the road there.
I don't see that either, Phil.
There are townhomes on the southerly side of the main road. You can kind of see them in the triplex form.
Yeah, it's what I'm questioning, because the plans that we got from the 6th, it looks like the town got from the 6th, don't include those. So I was wondering whether those have been taken out or not.
Oh, okay. No, I understand your confusion. So the plans that you see do not show any structures on the 6th. What you see is the lot lines for the single-family homes and the lot lines for the townhomes. So you just physically don't see the structures. You see the lots, but you don't see the structures. So on that southerly side of the main entrance None of the plans that we sent to you on the 6th for the definitive subdivision show driveways or houses.
And that's right. You're looking at P1, Phil?
Um, L1, actually.
L1 as well.
Yeah, so if you notice L1, L1 will show you the number of lots on the plan.
Yeah.
So no houses, no townhomes, just lots. And the townhomes will be developed in a fashion of townhomes or condominiums, where they'll have their exclusive use areas. They won't have necessarily lot lines. So the structures, the physical structures have not been located on the plans that you have today.
To the board, I ask if we could just let him finish his presentation.
Sure.
And then have questions at the end of his presentation.
Would you like to move on to the next slide, Mark?
Yeah, please, Jim. Thanks.
Hold on. There we go.
So the roads, the roads that we designed that'll have condos and single-family homes, they'll have gentle sweeping curves, something that I know the town of Bellingham has liked in the past for traffic calming effects. The roads will have all the utilities. They'll have town water, town sewer. And it will extend the town services, is something that Kevin agreed to do, is upgrade Mill Street with pedestrian access, adequate striping, improved water and sewer. So, and that extension of Mill Street will push all the way out to Route 140, where the Lincoln Property Truck Terminal will begin as well. This is just a 3D image of the architectural plans that were submitted with your package. On the left of this image is a single-family home, and to the right is one of the triplex units. We just wanted to sort of exemplify how the architecture will match and not be in competition with one another. We're going to have that same sort of New England-style character, both in the single-family homes and the triplex units. These are the architectural renderings of the triplex units. The top one is one model, and the bottom is a different model, just for sake of different number of bedrooms, different style. We're going to alternate those as they go down that main road, Main Collector Road.
Mark, the important thing on that previous slide is the lower triplexes. Those are designed for empty nesters. Those will have the master bedrooms on the first floor and additional bedroom on the second floor. Whereas the gray units, all those bedrooms are on the upper floor, more traditional.
These are the single-family home styles. These are a variety of different looks. Kevin and Henry Arnardo have worked with, worked on about five different options right now. And these are just some of the examples that could be developed on the different single-family house lots. Kind of gives a different style, you know, federal style, garrison style, colonial style. So Kevin wanted to give it a really good mix of visuals, so you don't, A, you don't have the straight roads, and B, you have a mix of architecture.
Yep. And again, on, oh, sorry. The yellow house in that bottom-left corner, that's a deceiving house, because that house in particular was designed for some of our corner lots. So unfortunately, Mark, I don't think you have the side elevations of that house.
I know. No.
That's actually a pretty substantial-looking house. It's really designed to see it from the other angle. So I don't know how to explain that, but I can get that over to Jim.
Yeah, and it was submitted with the package. It's just, it's front to back as opposed to left to right.
Yeah.
Other design parameters, like I mentioned earlier, is that the open space has to be at least 40% of the total land area. I think the plan that you have in front of you are about 49% open space. And we're working through the Conservation Notice of Intent to maybe iron out some spots that Conservation may not want in their open space. So we will at least have 40%. It'll be somewhere between the 40% and 50% number. And the number of townhomes in the overlay district could not exceed 40%, which I think we're down around the 30% to 35% range in the townhomes. Some of the off-site improvements that came about during the overlay district are very significant. And it came to fruition as part of a developer agreement between the town and the developer to fund improvements to the school system. It also added to the Mill Street improvements for a sewer pump station and a force main to be installed, so that the entire site could be sewed, and that neighboring failing septic system for industrial commercial properties might be able to connect to the system. The sidewalk installation along Mill Street is to be added for pedestrian access, and Mill Street is paved and restriped as part of the off-site improvements to fund, to give back to the town. Another big item was to create a road behind Town Hall, meaning at the traffic light, as opposed to having the main entrance to the subdivision just be Mill Street. This came about after the fact, sort of after the town meeting. In talks with Dennis Frain and Jim, they came up with a great idea that, you know, the better place to come up is to the traffic light and to sort of dovetail into the Route 140 widening project that the town has gotten a grant for. So it's, things all came together at the right time, and that new road behind Town Hall will not only allow a better connection to a traffic light, but will also allow the town's DPW to connect to the drainage basin that we were going to design behind it. So we're over-designing that drainage basin to help the DPW conform with the stormwater regulations that towns have to through the MS4 process. This sort of shows the overall site, starting from behind Town Hall at that intersection that I mentioned. This is an iteration that is not on the plans that you have in front of you that were submitted on the 6th. We've been working with the town and the DPW and trying to keep as much of the Town Hall parking lot and infrastructure behind it. So we've actually created more of an S curve behind Town Hall and oversized that basin in the area that Jim's kind of zooming into now. They were, when we had our first tech review committee meeting at Town Hall, Don DiMartino and Dennis kind of said, you know, the basin that they spent a lot of money on, they wanted to keep. And the way we had the road aligned was sort of the shortest distance between two points. So this actually will cost more to install. It'd add more infrastructure, but it will save the town's parking lot, the town's drainage basin on the westerly side, and it allows for increased stormwater for the basin close to the wetlands. As you go down the Mill Street, right away, right where Jim's cursor basically is, it's going to be one of the two pump stations that we have designed. That pump station has been overdesigned at the expense of Mr. Lobeser to show the connections of the possibility of failing septic systems for the commercial properties along Mill Street, and that they would have adequate capacity in that pump station should they want to connect in the future. It was also brought to our attention that the increased capacity of these two pump stations, and we'll get to the second one soon, should, we were asked by Don DiMartino to incorporate roughly 50 to 75 homes in the Davis Street area and on the north side of Route 140, in the event that those subdivisions fail, septic, that they have a way to connect into a public sewer system once these roads become public. So Jim, if you want to pan down to the Route 140 side where Lincoln Properties' connection is, that's where we're working with two agencies, Lincoln Properties and the Mass DOT. Lincoln Properties was ahead of us in schedule, so they've actually been driving the bus to, say, on that intersection design. So we've dovetailed our design into Lincoln Properties, and VHB's design to match that. And that is the latest and greatest, I believe, 50% design plans at Mass DOT. We don't expect much more to change, but we just wanted to make you aware that that intersection is dependent upon the Mass DOT's approval. So if you want to switch up to the next slide? Yeah, okay. I guess that's the final slide.
Mark, do you want to show them where the other pump station was, just so they could understand where it was?
Yeah, that's a good point. Jim, I don't know if you can zoom in, but it's Road, the end of Road D. Yep, basically where your cursor is. Yep. So the other pump station is going to be sort of where that sharp turn is on Road D. Yep. Maybe a little to the left, Jim. A little to the left, a little to the, yep, right there. That's where the pump station is going to be.
It's right there.
Yep. So that pump station will collect half of the, half of the design flow and some of the off-site flow for existing residences in the future, if they, if the town seems to think that that connection would be the right thing to do. That pump station will pump sewer up to Route 140, whereas the prior pump station will pump up to Mill Street at the 126 entrance. So just because of topographical reasons and elevation-wise, it made more sense to do two pump stations on this project as opposed to one.
Mark, I know you also have a recreational area. Did you want to point that out?
Yeah, so this plan, it's actually going to be in, if you go to the left, left, left a bit, down, down, right. Yep, right in there. That's where we're tagging the recreational area to be. The plans you have now were on Road B, but it makes sense with the riverfront area calculations that we're doing for the Conservation Commission, they would have less of an impact to be where the cursor is now.
And how big is that, Mark?
I believe it was a half an acre. And it's passive recreation. There's no jungle, Jim. It's just meant to be open space where folks can gather, throw a frisbee around, and just have a...
Not today, though.
Right, not today. And again, now that we're on this sheet too, to show you where those townhomes were, you'll see the grading lines on the south side of that Collector Road. So all of the lots have been graded out for townhomes and for single-family homes. It's just that it was misleading for, I think, the board to know where those buildings would be situated. And they'd be in areas along that road on the southerly side of that Collector Road.
Mark, what about some of the things that we've done on the design of the Collector Road?
Yes, some of the design improvements are that this Collector Road will have a couple of intermittent islands. It will be wider in width for travel lanes. It will have a sidewalk on one side. We're asking for one side. But it will have all of the design standards that Bellingham puts forth for a Collector Road as opposed to a residential road. And it's meant to, you know, obviously carry more traffic than the residential single-family side. So the other streets will have sort of a minor street design, whereas this thru road will have the Collector Street design standards, wider pedestrian
One of the, one of the things for the wider road, you're also going to be striping it for bikes, correct?
Correct.
That's kind of a big thing right now. This is a key connection point. We've been working with DOT on 140. And if we had an opportunity to now turn it up this road, and then meet at where the Old Domino's was, we are, we have another state project, both at the intersection and all the way down 126 to essentially where the bus barn is, that would all be striped with bike lanes. So that would be a large connection point where you can get essentially from the center of town all the way to Forge Park, essentially, by bike.
Yep. And one of the questions that came up today with Jim and I was, one of the drainage basins that services the new extension of Mill Street is kind of shown in that location there that Jim has. And based on all of the improvements that Kevin has agreed to on Mill Street, upgrading the width, upgrading the striping, upgrading the drainage, upgrading the striping for the bikes, and adding the infrastructure for the stormwater behind Town Hall, this was the one low point in the area that would be able to collect stormwater from that area. And we just, we felt as if the negotiations between the town and Kevin would lead us to be allowed to put that drainage basin in that location, as it is going to service Mill Street and the first 500 or 600 feet of the new development. As opposed to getting closer to the river, the Charles River, to the north, we felt as if this location was in harmony with the private-public partnership that this project has entered into.
What I'd like to do is open up the questions from the board, and then the public. Dennis, do you have any questions?
I'm good at this time.
Russ?
Yeah, just a question about Common Street. And I actually, I didn't even know that was called Common Street, but, which I know, I just want to confirm, we're talking about the street that goes to Town Hall and it goes to Walgreens, correct?
Yes.
So, and what this, so what this depicts is that connecting up to Mill Street, so that you can only take a right onto Mill Street?
Uh, no. The intention would be that Mill Street would still remain open, and that it would just be the signage that, in order to get to Route 140, take a left if you are exiting Mill Street. And if you want to go to Route 126 north, then stay on Mill Street.
I understand. Okay.
I want to get back to that in a minute.
Okay. And just one other question about this graphic here is, if, so Jim, if you go, just take your cursor and go to the right and down in that loop there. No, 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 up, 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 left. That, right there, right? What is that?
That's the drainage basin I was speaking about just moments ago.
All right, thank you. That's what I thought, but I'm just confirming.
Liz?
No, I'm good. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Brian?
Just a quick question. So that, the location of that basin that you were talking about, Mark, is what's the, is there some magic to that location versus other locations or some other considerations?
Yeah, no, we pointed that out as the lowest point for the new part of the development and the Mill Street section. As, I don't know if you've been to the site, but as you enter the, or come to the end of Mill Street and go into our site, it rises in elevation quite a bit. So in order to capture the first few hundred feet of the road, we wanted to get to the lowest elevation we possibly could to handle a bit of the stormwater. And that's where that location came from.
Okay.
And Brian, I think you kind of hit on a point here, and Mark touched on a little bit too. You know, it is a unique attribute to put it not on their property, but if there's an opportunity to collect drainage from Mill Street, that's kind, that would be extremely helpful to the town, as the Plaza and Mill Street were all constructed without any type of drainage whatsoever. So we could certainly look at that closer.
Phil, do you have any questions? Um, yeah, you mentioned the sweeping road a little bit, but what speed do you think Road A is going, what's the travel speeds on that road?
Yeah, I believe it'll be posted for 35 miles an hour per Collector Road standards.
Okay, because we were concerned that this would be used as a cut-through. And I guess, I guess I'm still concerned it would be a cut-through. What, is there any design features that would keep it from being a cut-through?
Yeah, I think just because both ends will be signalized, Phil, it's not an area where you'll be able to zip around a country road and come out at another location without a signalized intersection. So you're gonna, you're gonna have to go through two sets of lights to get to the other end, whichever way you look at it. Based on our traffic analysis, is that it is going to be primarily used for the residents of these 168 units, and that the general traffic, if they want to go through, you know, can go through, but it's going to be slower, it's going to be sweeping roads, and you'll still hit two traffic lights. So I think, I think that's where we came up with how this is going to be not a cut-through, but more of a service just to the residents and the few businesses on Mill Street.
The two traffic lights, one at the mechanic street with the warehouse project.
Yes.
And where, could you point out where the other traffic light is? If that's Mill Street?
Is that Walgreens and the Old Domino's?
The entrance to Town Hall. Okay, so basically, that's a, we've got lights there anyway, right? So you still get stopped at the light no matter what, so.
Correct.
Okay, we can move on. Thank you. Anything else? That's it for me. I have a few questions. And Dennis, please, feel free to provide your comments on this. It was my understanding that one of the goals of this project, when we decided to redirect the traffic to what will be called Common Street, was in essence to discourage people from entering this development on Mill Street. How can we do that with traffic patterns and signage?
Yeah, and I think that's a great point. And through the traffic engineers and the town administrator, this is a better overall product for trips coming to and from town. What, through the signage, we will basically see the residences, the two residences and the commercial buildings on Mill Street will likely be the only folks using Mill Street's intersection up to Route 126. There'd be no, there'd be no reason for other folks to be, to be skirting through that area. to be skirting through that area.
Secondly, one of the things we were very concerned about, and the reason we went to something that would be now called Common Street, was we didn't want everyone dumping out on Mill Street, and you just clarified that you plan to address that. What I like to have envisioned is I'd like to prohibit people from taking a left when they hit Mill Street, and only make that right-hand turn only. Because that will tie up the traffic in the morning and the, in the evening.
So just to be clear, if you could just put, reiterate that traffic movement, please?
What I'd like to see happen is you have the commercial district on Mill Street. You'll have residents from that area exiting the development on Mill Street, correct?
Yeah.
Coming up to Mill Street and 126.
Yes.
Getting a set of lights there. Ideally, that should be right turn only.
Yeah, I think, as the residences get, you know, acclimated to the area, if they're going to go north on 126, they will go up Mill Street, like you say, and if they're going to go left, if they want to go towards, you know, 495 or Franklin, they'll either go through the new Road A and out to Lincoln Properties area, or go behind Town Hall. It just, it wouldn't make sense for them to go all the way up that street.
Can we prohibit that from being done?
I think that's something we could probably talk to the traffic engineer about.
That was the recommendation in the traffic report.
It was.
So, so yeah, I think we could get comments from our safety officer, Lee Rolls, to confirm that the town would be in favor of that as well. I don't, I think that, that would be prudent, but let me confirm with Officer Rolls, and I get back to you all.
Well, you're in essence connecting to Lincoln Properties at the, at the beginning of what you want to call the end of this development. I'd like to put some measures in place to discourage trucks from using the Road A to leave the Lincoln Properties area. We have spoken to Lincoln Properties. They plan to put adequate signage in, but we'd like to put some, I don't, I don't know what you will call it, mediation, or maybe a small rotary, a turn, a turnabout, whatever, roundabout, excuse me. So really to discourage trucks from going through what will become a residential area and enable them.
Yeah, I wasn't privy to the decision by the planning board as far as how their access was out to, to Route 140, but I thought there was some, some language discussing exactly that. Again, I don't know what that language was.
Well, that's something we'd like to see if it can be done.
Had it been done, Jim, through that permitting process with Lincoln Properties?
Yeah, so there was discussion of discouraging trucks, as, as the chairman is mentioning. And in addition, I believe that the driveway design was made kind of similar to what you have over on Mill Street, where it's angled somewhat, so it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be useful for a truck to turn right out of the driveway. But I can provide you with that, you probably already have the driveway design, but nevertheless, I can provide it to you, and maybe we can go over that and see if there's additional ways we could discourage that.
Yeah, and Jim, I think you're right. I think it's sort of a hybrid of what Bill was talking about. I think what they were really doing with the design was not necessarily a roundabout. I think that when you came out of Lincoln, they were making the angle of the road so severe that if a trailer truck tried to do it, they couldn't even make the turn.
That's the intent, yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, Bill, that's what Lincoln was doing. So, Mark, I think we should just touch base with DHB, and I know that they were taking that pretty serious, too, about not having trucks go down, down that direction. They, they don't want them to go down there. They really don't want them to pass.
Right.
And then when you come back with another rendering, will you update it, please, to show the... Dennis, Mr. Frank, any questions or comments?
Sure, no.
Anyone in the public have any questions or comments?
Dennis Frain here, Bill.
Yeah.
Yep, he, just a comment on the access out onto Mill Street. I think that you brought it up, and that was our concern all along. When the project was passed at town meeting, it was passed without the access onto Common Street. It was, it was approved. And of course, when it went to town meeting, it was just conceptual, it was just an overlay. So it wasn't concrete, but Jim and I had met with, with Kevin and his team, and I know the safety officer had a lot of concern about that Mill Street exit, and forcing everyone to go right, because people would turn right coming out of Mill Street and just turn around in the town common or somewhere else, and then come back. So we, we had talked to Kevin about either crossing wetlands to build his way out to Common Street, or coming around just the way they did. So I think, I think it's exactly what we were looking for, and I know Don was, was adamant about the, the basin, trying to get a basin to service Mill Street, as well as something that would handle the town center project. So all those things were accommodated, and we certainly appreciate that. They're all accommodated within this plan, those two basins, as well as the access out to, along Common Street and out to Route 140. I mean, there were 150 units proposed. We encouraged them to look at a little more density to offset the costs of the types of things that we were looking for, because our town center improvements, the grant that we have, we're having to contribute a fair amount of money, and by them putting in the stormwater basin, certainly saving us a fair amount of funds. So we definitely appreciate that.
I think they've done a great job, a great proposal.
Thanks, Bill.
I'm, you know, I'm very pleased. I think they've done a lot of work.
Thanks, Bill.
Jim, what's the next step?
So we're, we're getting close here, but we need, there's a lot more detail that needs, that needs to be vetted. We still have to vet the drainage report. I know they've been altering it slightly in order to meet separation of groundwater, and also to incorporate the drainage that Dennis Frain was just mentioning, in order to get our town center intersection included in this. So I think we're a little ways away, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, about until we receive that drainage report? What's your estimated schedule there?
Yeah, I would say that drainage report, once, once coordinated with Don, would be available within the next two weeks.
Okay. And so the next steps, Bill, after that would be to engage our peer review to start looking at that. Also, obviously, typically how the board likes to treat these projects is we like to coincide our permitting review with conservation. So obviously, once that drainage report's submitted, we'd expect an NOI submitted to conservation. Is that what your intent, Mark?
It absolutely was, yeah. And we've talked to the Conservation Commission and Dennis as well, and we'll, we'll actually, just because of the unique project being, you know, private and public, we're going to be submitting two NOIs, one for the town land and one for the, the applicant's property, just to keep it clean.
Mark, what's your time for?
Your time frame, Mark?
I would say after the drainage study is done in two weeks, we could have that notice of intent within a few days after that. So, you know, two to three weeks would be, would be on board with conservation and continue with planning and the peer review.
And when, ideally, when would you like to start construction?
Tomorrow.
So, Bill, but in a realistic timeframe here, so in getting the drainage report back in, say, two weeks, you get it submitted to the NOI shortly thereafter, you're in front of conservation probably early June at that point. And, but all the while, we could start vetting the drainage reports and, and the traffic study, and get comments back to Mark, and we could be trading, trading reviews in the meantime. So, you know, certainly open to discussion, but it does look like a June 11th meeting would make sense. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that.
Jim, one thing, it's Kevin, just that I'd like to add to Bill and the rest of the board, is it really, it's obviously a large project, and it's just been, it's really been the most incredible project we've kind of worked on, because never before have we been able to work so closely with someone like Jim and Dennis, and especially Don, who, who has given us all the access to the engineers that, that they use for their sewer pump stations. So it is taking us a little bit longer, I would say, to get everything designed, but it's only because we have been really working hand in hand with everybody in the town. So right down to the fact that, Mark, we ended up going in there and, you know, there was some question with it being a big project at one of our meetings, you know, how much ledge is there, for example. So we decided to go in there with drill rigs and actually find it, which is what's now enabling Mark to potentially adjust the elevation of the road, correct, Mark?
Correct, yep.
So, you know, so little things like that are, I think, are really important, because I think that the product that you're going to see in the next couple of weeks is definitely not like the normal subdivision where it's just a developer's idea, and then here you go, what do you think? I mean, this is, this is, it's at the very least 50/50, maybe 70/30, though.
Kevin, publicly, I want to say, we've had, and I believe Dennis and Jim will agree, we have a great working relationship with you.
Yeah, thanks.
And, you know, we feel very comfortable with, you know, the product you put forward, you know, what you've done for the town. You know, I don't have any concerns from that viewpoint at all.
Good.
We're very comfortable with the overview and, you know, the work you people do.
We, we do have a few individuals in the public here. I don't know if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns. You can feel free to unmute yourself if you like, if anyone has any comments. Doesn't look like anyone, okay.
Jim, is there anyone out there?
No, no one who has comments. All said, Bill.
So we need to continue this. Do I need a motion to continue to June 11th?
Yes, please.
Could someone please make a motion?
So I'll move to continue the meeting to June 11th.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one. Pardon? Sorry, Bill, just one quick question. Jim, something, if we're ever released from our self-imposed exile, is that, is it possible, or maybe we can think about having a site visit at some point, just to get lay of the land?
Yep.
Well, okay, and I'm on a order a little because there is a motion on the floor. But what I like to do is bring the public up to speed on this as quickly as we can, and encourage the public to participate in this process, although it's through Zoom meetings. You know, we do like to have public input, and we do want to be very transparent through this whole process. So I would, you know, see if we can do that, you know, however it's possible. Getting back, there's now a motion on the floor to extend the date to June 11th for the continued public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm standing. Motion passes unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate the hard work you've done, and I believe the town, town people will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Jim, what do we have for any A and Rs?
No A and Rs tonight.
No voucher statements, voucher reports?
No voucher reports, just simply minutes this evening.
Hey, we all had a chance to review the minutes from the March 26th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Did I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 26th meeting?
So moved.
Can I please have a second?
A second.
All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jim, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
And when, what do you anticipate our, our next meeting being?
So May 14th, we actually have a pretty stacked agenda. May 14th is the continuation of Bellingham Shores, and then we also have our engineers for the Route 140 study. That was, if you recall, that was mitigation paid for through previous development of the Lincoln Properties. They funded the, the traffic analysis and study for us to look at Route 140 from the, essentially the center of town back to the Franklin Town Line. So they'll have that study, a brief presentation for us, and some Q and A after that.
In regards toward next meeting, I am assuming a lot will be based on whatever announces in regards to what he wants to do come May 4th. Is there anticipated that this process will continue into May for Zoom meetings?
I would imagine so, honest, to be honest. That's who, I think all the boards in town are kind of gearing up for that to be the case for May, but certainly, you know, as soon as I hear it, or as soon as you hear it, you know, well, we can certainly pass that message along, but the way I'm planning it is May looks like it's a virtual, another virtual month.
I have motion for adjourned, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes, ladies and gentlemen, for adjourned. Thank very much for your time this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.